Let's slowly dive into this. Last two tables, so you could call this the final table bubble. Uh, in all these spots, we'll zoom in a bit, so you can actually see something. This is the right, uh, size, right? Yeah, this is the right size. Ooh, Louis Capaldi. So, it's always important to look at the stack sizes here. They will be random in every, uh, in every scenario here. I picked all different scenarios at once. Uh, so we are, we are very short here, we're second in chips. Definitely some ICM pressure on us, but this will normally already be fold, so... Let's not think about it. Let's not think about it too much. But we can't auto-click these hands. We also have to check if there, if we have to really adjust our ranges. Because of the ICM. This seems a very easy fold as well, but... If we would have like 100 blinds and everybody has 20, I could see maybe a play, but... I, I, I am, I am not always, uh, instantly clicking even though I know what the answer is, Henny. It's almost, I'm almost nitrolling you guys. Nitrolling in GTO Wizard. But it's a good, it's a good effort to try to always look at the stacks around you. Whether it's in actual live poker or in GTO Wizard setting. You know, it's always should we look ahead, like, what are the jamming stacks and... Do we want to open tight because of the jamming stacks and everything? We keep folding though, and we keep being correct. This is going great. This is going perfect so far. I was gonna jam this. Uh... We are in last place, so we can, we can jam pretty wide. So we need to double up. But we will not rejam above the low jack open. We have basically no fold equity. Because they have to call five into 11. If we jam. But I get a really good price, so I think we should fold this one. King queen gets close probably. Yeah, 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 feedback is good, see, Henny. Uh, I don't mind, it's not your chat proing, we are learning together here. I'm, I'm leaning towards fold, but I'm thinking about what would be the worst hand we jam here. I think king queen would be close, king queen suited I jam. That's my intuition, man, we are, ICM pressure on us is very low here, right? Because we are in, in much, in completely last place, and even if we double up, we're still in last place. So king queen suited probably, we can check out the actual range in a little bit. Yeah, king queen offsuit seems to border in my, uh, in my beautiful poker mind. It's a fold. Let's check the range, uh, can we do that very handily? Uh, this is the smartest, fastest way to get it. Okay, we go, king queen offsuit is border, because we sometimes fold it. Uh, king queen suited is indeed a jam, so I kinda happy with that. And then, this is weird to me, to have a calling range at all here for seven. Uh, so we have a calling range here with king queen suited, apparently. King jack suited, sorry, and sixes, and ace eight. I mean, you don't have to do that, I mean, if we are, if we're in an actual game, I'm never calling there for seven, or two blinds. I'm never seeing a flop, you know, it's weird to me. And what, what surprises me is that it doesn't balance it with aces, like... Isn't the idea that by calling a bit of your bottom range here, that you get to call with aces as well sometimes? But it never does that here, you always want to jam. Yo, welcome Hourglass, how you doing? Yeah, GTO being weird, but you never have to worry about all these small weird side cases, you know? And so far we have everything correct, right? We played four hands, but hey, I'm allowed to be happy. But this is a worse hand than GPPV, so you don't have to think about it really. Ooh! I, um, I was a little too quick there. I was a little bit too quick there. It is actually, uh, border, it's actually a border hand. Um... What spot is this? Highjack, yeah, 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 it makes, makes sense, makes sense. Suited kings are so powerful, chat. Suited kings are so powerful. I would have assumed it was a no-brainer, but it's actually on the border. King six suited, we can open. In the highjack, pretty fun. The music is low, eh? Yeah, and the thing is, that we can always discuss exploitation in these GTO study streams, like... Should we open as wide as GTO? In the final two table spot? I think so. I think we wouldn't have to tighten up, because our opponents are probably not playing back at us enough, right? They might call too wide in the big blind, not understanding ICM. Like, a decent poker player that just understands that the big blind is a spot where you call super wide, you might not adjust, so you have less fold equity. That might be a reason to knit up a little bit in a spot like this. You have to have a reason, right, to convert from IGTO. Like, that's exploiting, but if you don't have a reason for it, you should follow the charts, right? Does that make sense? But it's one, it's, it's, it's interesting to me too, that king six is here, is a clear open here. Um... We're all very close in chips. So, ICM is, uh, ICM factor is small. Can we see the bubble factor here? We have to zoom out one. Uh, no, it doesn't show that here. Does it? No. I thought I saw it earlier in some other view. If you zoom in, it just deletes some information. No, it doesn't show bubble factors, but maybe here? It shows payouts here? And it shows bubble factor here, but it's just a lot of clicks to get there. Um... Oh, this is pretty high ICM, uh... This is all pretty, pretty high, uh, bubble factors. So the first number in, can you see that? I know it's small, I'm sorry. I know it's small. Uh... Whoa, that's big! The first number is the risk premium. I made a command about, uh, an article that goes into depth here. Risk premium means we need 10% more equity than normally in a spot if you have to call it all-in, so if you normally need 42%... That's a pretty normal number, right? 42% comes up a lot, 45% if, if somebody jams, uh, on your min raise or something. If your risk premium is 10%, you need 10% more equity to be able to call. So not 42, but 52, that's a lot of more equity. 1.5 is the bubble factor, so it's a risk premium is the first number and bubble factor is the second one. These are pretty high bubble factors. Uh, so I'm surprised about that. They're all very similar though. We're all in the same annoying boat, that's, that's, uh, you know, that's how you can see, see it. We're all the same in our annoying boats, how can I get rid of this sidebar? Oh, here, cool. So I hope that made some sense in this spot here. So, I said ICM first, uh, I said ICM is not a factor here, it is a huge factor here, so I was wrong. But the thing is, we are all in the same boat, you know, we all want to make the final table. So we all are under the same pressure, that's basically, uh, what it says. Yeah, and Henny is a nit-confirmed, he even folds ace king preflop sometimes. We had some hands about that, uh, earlier this week, uh, in the Discord. Uh, shall we play queens? This is such a weird spot, because we are the table captain here. Uh, so we would open very wide here. Uh, in the highjack, we would open wider than GPPV, we would, we would open any suited king here probably. Right? Let's check that, if that assumption is correct. It's always, it's always good to find the borders. So we only do preflops yet. Um... This solution, this, uh, this, this, this ICM stuff has no postlop continuations. All preflop so far today. So I think king do suited and like queen four suited. Stuff like that. What did I say? That's pretty good, that's pretty damn close. I said king do suited, queen four suited. So, I'm on the right track here, we can open very wide. Uh, because the, uh, bubble factor on us is very low. And it's very high on, uh, everybody else. I wish I could go to the bubble factor button easily, oh, here! Look at this, chat, look at this! Do you see these three little bubbles? That's the bubble factor window. I found it! So we were, we are, uh, we are highjack. We are highjack, and see, our bubble factor is pretty low. Little bit more than one, but for everybody else it's way higher, so we can pressure the table. It's very clear, simple situation, but it's nice to, you know, emphasize it. This is the open range in the highjack. This looks more than I could, this looks more than I could of open range normally, right? This looks more as the GPPV cut-off. Alright, we move on. I like that I found the bubble factor button there. Oh... Yeah, we have to go back, this is an open a new tab sadly. Alright, um, final two tables, this is all final two tables. Uh, I'd lean towards a jam, but the question is always how, uh, how, how nitty can we be here? Uh, there's lots of short stacks, so this is probably not even that clear of a jam. With the eight, seven, and ten blinds, uh, ahead of us. But yeah, I think tens is too strong, um, to consider folding, but I'm wondering what the minimum hand would be. Uh, it's seven-handed. We can assume final tables are all eight-handed, by the way, I think in these scenarios. So we're like 15 people left, so it's not that close to the actual bubble. Like sevens plus maybe? I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure we jam sevens. But I think sixes might already be folding, I think that's the borderline pocket pair here, sixes. Uh, that's, that 98% makes me scared that it's even nittier than that. That, that 98% is scary, but maybe that's just a limp sometimes. We check it out? Fives, fives. I was off by one as well, well, I said sevens for sure, sixes on the border, so I was off by, well... Off by two maybe, two tips, tips. Uh, interesting. So we don't have to knit up really that much here. This is pretty close to a normal ten-blind jam. And we are under the gun. It surprises me, because the bubble factor is indeed pretty high. 8% more equity against lowjack needed, run all-in. Also 10% against the big blind. So I'm kind of surprised that it's still so wide. I know it's not that wide, but compared to a normal under the gun plus one jamming range, this is not that much tighter, right? Ah, well. Force is a fold indeed, Henny. I'm enjoying this, and so far we have everything correct. But I think it's cool, we also look at the thresholds, instead of just looking at if it's correct or not what the hand is. Yo, Ayaka. Thanks for the good luck. Doing some GTO wizard training today. ICM spots, let's fold the nine-seven. If I'm unsure, I'll wait longer and ask chat for feedback. So this is probably an easy fold, well, against under the gun. I mean, probably even ten-deck suited might be folding, you know, it's... What are you gonna do against under the gun? We are so short and there's jams behind. Gonna be very tight here. Gonna be very tight in that spot. Yo, Zerxmetling, I saw you go in earlier, but I missed saying hi to you, welcome to the stream. It's like we have a relationship. We need to, we should need a blocker in that spot. Okay, this is button versus under the gun open. This is a weird situation with fives and sixes. I'm not gonna get too bothered by, like, trying to understand why sixes is a fold and fives is a jam. I really think fives is a very loose jam, by the way. I would consider as jamming sevens, I understand that that's, but I would never jam as loose as fives here. Against under the gun open when we are so short. But I guess we still have some fold equity. We obviously have some fold equity. I, I think I undervalue pairs in general, like, especially the sevens to fives. I, I, I undervalue the equity those hands have against any range. Which is, which is good. And then we never call here, we have no calling range in this spot, which I think makes a lot of sense as well. You got, you got like the, the, the rejam stack, so you know, you don't always make sure you can see the flop. We're under ICM pressure, so yeah, I, I understand, it's just jam or fold here. Um... Interesting, sevens plus and most suited, most suited broadways and ace jack offsuit. Even ace stack offsuit, I would consider folding here. Um... Even ace stack offsuit, I would consider folding and king queen offsuit as well. But for the rest, I think it's close to what I would do, ace queen I would jam, sevens I would jam. The question becomes, are, are your general under the gun openers in your player, player pool closer to GTO open range, or are they tighter or looser? That's always the question. A question from Alan. The GTO wizard training is brilliant, how much does that software cost? Uh, link is in the chat, you get 10% discount as well, there's two, uh, types of subscriptions. The cheapest one is like 35 a month, and I think the highest premium tier is like $69 a month. It's an investment, but I can tell you it's worth a lot if you study a lot with this software, you know? Uh, the light call is red. Yes, no, the light red is always a min raise, let me tell you, let me show you. So aces, a min raises basically, uh, re-races, not all-in. But it's almost never done here. The, the dark red is always a jam, green is always a call. Blue is always a fold, at least in my standard, uh, color scheme. Not a scheme, but it's a color scheme. So aces often deviates, and then we, then you need some balance, right? So that's why we have these suited aces to balance our aces min raise. Uh... But I don't know if I would do that. Yeah, always, Zitante. Yeah, in this, in this view, it doesn't, uh, show the legenda. But if I zoom out one, you can see it here. Um... But I like the zoomed-in version, because we can see it so much better if you're watching me on a small screen, so... But here you can see the actual numbers as well. But if you zoom in, then, uh, that disappears. Cool! Let's continue, our fold, uh, was correct. Nine out of nine so far, chat. Nine out of nine, what the fuck, yo Lars! Welcome to the stream, we're doing some GTO study tonight. And, uh, in about two hours, we'll play some games. So come back later or stick around for that. Easy lay down. Um... Stock was trying to convince me to play some CS:GO on stream in the future, Lars. I, 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 I think I promised it while I was drunk, but I shouldn't have. So of course this is a fold, we have to look into the range here. What we do against, uh, highjack min raise. I, I wanna look into it. Small blind versus highjack min raise. So we jam force plus. Ace for suited, ace for suited mixes everything. Ace for suited mixes everything. Try to implement that in your game. Fold, it's even folding sometimes. Imagine, fold, call, raise, and all-in, all options are on the table for ace for suited. Crazy. The crazy poker hand. You're trying to get your global, is that the ra, is that's a ranking problem or something, Lars? You gotta get your ranking back or something? Yeah, it's the rainbow hand. So we jam every suited, Broadway, ace ten, ace jack. Highjack min raise, yeah, this makes a lot of sense, this makes a lot of sense. Again, I'm not sure if I would jam force. I might have just folded that. This is all final two tables, yes, Zitante. Um, and later we'll do an actual final table drill after the break. This is all final two tables. Um... Because all the, otherwise, there would be way more green hands here, I think. Think we might call much, ah, it's short stacks. GTO likes to call in the small blind way more than I do, um, in general, but in ICM, we never like to call. ICM prefers all-in, because you reduce variance, like... And you also reduce the fact that you might fold postlop with the best hand, you know? But if you go all-in, you always realize all your equity. If you go to the flop, you might not, because you are too timid or whatever. Can you imagine? We played every hand correct so far? Okay, this is probably an easy jam, and again, it's always the question, how wide are we going here? Um, this is five, this is five players on this table. So that means, uh, there's 11 or, or 10 players left, we don't know, 11 or 10. So this is really, uh, really, uh, this is really final table bubble, uh, situation. Uh, but yeah, the cut-off is opening wide, because he's the chip leader. So that makes this an easy, even easier jam. And, uh, we'll look at that. But look at it, how easy! Yeah, so, um... That's always the, and we're wondering this all the time, right, Zirani? Um... Before, before we look into that. Um... I think ace ten offsuit probably? He min raises from a huge stack, we have 10 blinds on the button, yeah, ace ten offsuit I'd go for. But it's probably the worst. That, that's my guess, and probably every pair or like threes plus or something. No, 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 I'm not, I'm not saying that based on his hand. But yeah, you have to agree, that cut-off opens super wide here, right? We are all short, even the 25 blind stack in the, in the highjack, and he folded already. So he's only facing the short stacks, so the cut-off can even jam a lot. Um, I should have folded my screen, yes! You are right, uh, Zitante. So I think ace ten offsuit. And threes plus, that's my guess. For, you know, for a big portion of that range. Huh? Oh, this is the cut-off calling against us, uh... This is the cut-off opens range, yes. So the cut-off does jam a lot. But also min raise folds this portion, and this portion, and min raise calls the strong hands. If you have a jamming range and you have also a min raising range, the min raising range is always very polarized. So we have an easy decision if they jam behind you with your call or fold. So tens plus, of course, we min raise call, all these aces we min raise call. And all these hands we min raise fold, these suited queens and stuff. Then we have the button range, this is the one, what the fuck? I said threes plus! I'm, I'm, I'm an ICM guru in disguise. My problem is I never get to the final table, so I can never show off my skills. Uh, and on the ace ten side, it's ace ten off, so I was wrong-ish. Um... But it's close enough, you know? Close enough. I, I, I have to admit, I practiced three hands, Zirani. I practiced, I practiced three hands, and I got the, uh, rating gaffe. Which is a word I never knew about, and I have Googled what it means. It wasn't as good as, uh, it's going now. I, I played three hands before the stream, and the guy had two wrong and one correct. Not that it matters. So let's look at the bubble factors again. Um, that is a very high bubble factor for the highjack, by the way. Uh... And that makes a lot of sense, the highjack is the second in chips on this table, with 25 blinds. And the cut-off is the massive chip leader with 63 big blinds on the final table bubble. That's, so that makes a lot of sense, the highjack is on them under the most pressure. A two bubble factor, I haven't seen that today yet. And he needs 16.8% more equity in an all-in against, against the big stack, against the cut-off. Imagine, so normally you might, might need 45% if they jam, you need, you need 60% equity. So the highjack has to really knit up here, which makes a lot of sense. The second and third in chips, the mid-stacks are always under the most pressure. The short stacks are also under pressure, but they have the more tendency to try to double up, you know? And our, uh, bubble factor as the button is also high-ish, but we have to take gambles, you know? It's a 10% against premium, which is still pretty high, don't get me wrong. But because the cut-off opens so wide, we can still jam wide, so it balances out that way. Um... If that makes sense. I hope it all makes sense. If you have any questions, you can always ask me, and I will pause and try to answer. I'm not a GTO wizard guru, but I'm getting better at it. Yeah, it's also my problem, Zitante, uh, Zirani. I cash too often, in general, like 22% of the time, I get shoot lower, like to 18%. Like, if I play a little more, a little more aggressive on the bubble, and, and close to final tables as well, like, I should try to go for bigger stacks. I'm overvaluing ICM in small ICM spots. But I've been aware of this for a while, I'm trying to change, but I'm not sure if I, I already changed it. The long run will tell us, right? The long run will tell us. It's a, it's a long game, and I'm ready for the long game. Alright. Next hand. We're all mids, chat, we're all mids for some, for some reason. Ooh, this is interesting, well, it's always interesting. But I think we jam. Final two tables. Uh, oh, it's an, it's even easier than I thought, we cover everybody. Um... The highjack will be somewhat careful with the shortest stack, but... Um... I don't think this is a spot where we have a flattening range needed, because of the awkward stack sizes behind. I think if we, if we had like more multiple 40, 50 blind stacks, I, we for sure would have a flattening range here. Uh, so we can trap with aces and kings. Uh, I, I think there's even spots where we only flat in spots like that. Uh, I think I've seen that. Or I've heard some guru like Giraf Ganger talk about it. Some spots like this where somebody jams before you and you have a bigger stack, sometimes you flat all your range, which makes playing very easy, right? Just gotta decide if, if your head is good enough to call, but... Um... I don't think this is a spot like that. I think this is a spot where we wanna isolate, uh, the highjack and just try to knock him out. So I think this is an easy jam, but it's good to discuss why that flattening strategy. Yeah, we, we look at the range again, we'll make it a habit to look into it. We have to first watch what everybody else does, that's fair. Oh, we had ace deuce, that's wide! That's wide. I think. Let's investigate. So let's first check, uh, the highjack all-in. This is the highjack all-in. These are the bubble factors. Uh... Yeah, so the highjack is under low-ish bubble, uh, factor, low, low ICM pressure, low-ish. There's still some, but low-ish. Which explains why he's allowed to jam ace two suited. And every suited nine basically in force plus. He also has a min raising range for 13, which I think is, no, for 11! That surprises me, chat, 11 blinds, he has a pretty big min raising range. Of course, I'd like to min raise aces and kings. But I think I would just jam ace king, and all the other, you know, strongest hands, I think I would just jam those. But for 11, sure, for 15, I would have a min raising range, but 11, I'm not sure. Should I have a min raising range for 11? Apparently, GTO tells us, tells us so. Then the question is, uh, the cut-off. So we, you re-jammed jacks, which was obviously correct. How weak do we go? How, what's our worst pair we re-jam? We already know this range now, right? This is the small, this is the highjack jamming range. So I'd assume, like, even fives are good enough, like, fives or sixes, probably? Sevens, okay. And we do flat aces, Henny. So I was wrong with implying that it's not in this spot relevant, it's very relevant here, apparently. Aces is a flat here. I thought the stack sizes were, were weird for this. We do, and then we also flat sevens and eights sometimes. But we can't fold anymore, right? We're committed against everybody. Maybe ace jack offsuit folds. Uh... We call 11, now we cannot fold anything, right? It's, we have 17 blind min raise from the big blind. I mean, you'd hate your life, I'd probably have to fold, right? If, let, let's do this, uh... Let's call. And then the big blind goes all-in. What do we do then? Uh... As the, as the cut-off, this is us. Oh, wow, we even fold, uh, I see, I, I thought folding ace deck offsuit, but I didn't expect to fold, uh, we had to fold tens as well, wow. I mean... It's ICM, but two people are all-in before us, right? So we can save ourselves here, uh... Because this is the big blind's jamming range. The old queens plus ace queen suited, ace king offsuit. Obviously a strong range, because there's 11 blind all-in and a flat. Uh, from a big stack. So yeah, it makes a lot of sense, even ace queen suited is like border. Um... So I understand that, but I still told you might be priced in when I had like tens, because our puddles are so good. But, uh, not good enough, getting four to one, not good enough. Alright, that's cool, that's cool. Let's move on. We looked into that enough. I'm really enjoying this tonight. Ooh, we had a big stack. 62 big blinds. 62 big blinds, final two tables. Do we jam? Do we jam, chat? We never fold, and calling is probably plus EV. I mean, calling is probably plus EV. But I'm thinking about jamming here. I mean, in-game, I probably flat almost always as well, honey. But look at the stack sizes. This guy is under pressure. By all these people, 18, 14, 16, 10, and we have, we only risk 24. The problem is he's under the gun, so maybe this, maybe we only do this against hijack Cut-off button, you know? Uh, because this is a pretty strong open range. Because he's under so much ICM pressure. Yeah, literally, literally that. So I, I totally get why flatting here is fine, right? I would also do it. But I'm just trying to think outside the box here. I think we jam a little wider than you might expect here. But maybe this is not a great one, because we don't block ace x. You basically want to have an ace blocker, like. That helps a lot. So he doesn't have aces and ace king too much. Um. So yeah. I understand flatting. Tree bed folding is an idea as well. But then, this hand is too strong for that, right? You, you throw equity out of the window, but tree bed folding is a strong hand like this, so. With this hand, we probably don't tree bed fold. May, maybe a weaker hand like ace 5 offsuit does that or something, right? Or ace 5 suited? Long story short, I like a call. 100%, but let's check at, uh, I'm not surprised about that. But let's tech, let's check what we jam. Let's check what we jam against under the gun, what the fuck, oh, this is the big blind calling range, yeah? Did you guys know you can call white in the big blinds? It's true. Um. We don't jam ever. We do tree beds sometimes, though, wow, this is such. This is a little bit of a surprise to me. Um. I was correct about the ace 5 suited, I mentioned that. But I mentioned it, I mentioned it as a tree bed bluff, not as a jam. So I, I kind of had this spot completely wrong. The, the call was good, we still have our streak. But, uh, we should never try to bluff here. Apparently, it's also for us, it's a bit too risky. I mean, these are bluffs, don't get me wrong, these are all tree bed bluffs, but. It's way less frequent than I expected. And never with like suited broadways. So that surprises me a little bit. But what I said about blockers is correct here, right? So that's why we tree bed bluff with ace x offsuit here. I'm sure I'd have to cojones. Yeah, and the same, yeah, 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 you see that a lot in GTO, it's. It's hard to implement, you know, it's hard to do that. It's hard to actually tree bed bluff king for offsuit here. But we're allowed to, we're allowed to. Bottom hand of the offsuit range we, we use here. And we never do, do it with suited hands. Um. Yeah, 5 3 offsuit, man. We mostly call to see a flop. And we have a smittering of a small tree bet. Interesting. Are, are you okay? Are you okay? Yeah, I'm, this is just like, it's almost silver noise, like. I'm not too worried about these three little. Small raises here, but the whole point is we can bluff with these hands here, the offsuit ace x next. I can't believe we have still our streak, we have, we have had really any really tough decisions yet. That's why we dive into the ranges, where to actually look into it. Uh, I think we fold. And no, we don't get dealt every hand, I already made up a tighter range, but. Maybe it's a little too wide still, so we get weak, weak hands too often. This is not, uh, too easy, though. Um, I'm afraid we have to defend, but I, I hate these spots. This is all very, we're all short. 11, fear 14, 11, 19, 16. Uh, we never jam. It's too risky against the Cut-off, even. Even against the Cut-off, it's too risky to jam. Um, I wouldn't mind folding. But I'm afraid we have to defend this. And I would, I would hate my life with every flop that comes. Except ace 4 deuce. So, what do you guys think? It's annoying to have to defend this, right? But I'm sure we have to. And against the button, we might have to jam. Um. Against the button, we might have to jam it in. But against Cut-off, I think it's mostly calling. GTO raise 4. It's an option, mate, apparently it's an option. I'd hate my life if I'm the Cut-off. And I'm opening here with jack 9 suited, or. You know, or king 9 offsuit, or. Porch deuces, I jam porch deuces here. If you min raise like jack 8 suited, then you raise to 4 blinds, you know? Super annoying to have to play against that. Yeah, I, I, I can see that, honey, I can see that, we cover him, right? Um, it matters, we would have 4 blinds left if we, if we get all-in and we lose the all-in. We would have 4 big blinds left. But we can make a comeback, that matters a little bit. And he might just fold pre, which is our hope. The ace 4, man, it's, it's, it. It's, we have, we certainly have fold equity. We certainly have fold equity. The, how wide is the Cut-off opening here from 11, from 13 blinds? Like he's, GTO for sure has min raise folds, but. Very interesting spot, very interesting spot. Yeah, if, if, if a recreational does this, or even worse, he goes 3 blinds, I fold this. Um. Because this is just dominated so often. But if it min raises, it's a little less scary, but still pretty scary, right? I think we should knit up against the recreationals that min raise from the, from 13 blinds. Because they will not use that as a bluff too often. They will have the nuts too often, I think, right? Is that true? And he agrees. But we are not playing against a recreational here, we're, we're playing against GTO here. So I'm, I'm leaning between calling and all-in. Yeah. I guess so. It's not an easy spot. I, 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 I almost clicked the call button, and then I thought, this is, this hand plays so bad post-flop. Like. If we hit an ace, we're not even happy, but we have to go for it, right? Because our SPR is too low to get away. We're trying to hit an ace against this wide range, basically. And then hopefully we're not dominated, that's our plan here, basically. But what flops can we bluff all-in with, like? Yeah, I'm building the suspension here a little bit, sorry, Ytanto, but what flops can we bluff at reasonably? Like. Like a 7 7 6 or something, like a. A mid-type paired board, we can check raise all-in or something? Do we ever check raise all-in with a bluff with ace 4 suit? I, I, I'm trying to see a post-flops game here, that makes any sense. Oh! Oh, it's correct enough, it's correct enough. We don't lose our streak. Everything is correct, except folding. Uh. But the most played is all-in, chat, and, uh, raise 4 is indeed a thing. A big thing. We need to look into this. We need to look into this. So the Cut-off raises to 2 blinds. We are in the big blind. And, uh. The, the offsuit aces again. Are, are min, are min raise folding. Uh, yep. So we raise 4. And the original racer goes all-in. This is our continue range. We fold all the crappy hands we min raise. The only call is the suited queens plus. Which is kind of surprising. Because our puddles are, yeah, our puddles aren't even that great, right? It's a pot-sized bet still left. We have to call 9 into 18, yeah, it's a pot-sized bet still. Um. Yeah, 13 matters, right? If it was 11, we probably don't do, ever do this. But 13 is apparently just about big enough. That we can do this. It's very interesting. It's very interesting. But we're only getting 2 to 1, so we're not that committed. We're not that committed. After they jam. This is kind of eye-opening to me as well. Um. So this is our strategy in the big blind once more. We have these tree bed bluffs with these hands. And to balance, we do this with also queens plus. Um. Yeah, in break. In break, you are less distracted, but you're also not on your computer, right? I was planning to also do a break, uh. A short break at 9. Oh, I haven't loaded any marbles, I'll do that next hour, I, I forgot to load up the marbles. We'll do, we'll do the marbles, uh, after the next break, around 10. One more hand, one more hand. One more hand. And then we'll do final table stuff after the break. Ace king. It's good we also look into the details of the ranges, because some, some spots are easy. Uh, I have folded ace king on the final table though a couple months ago, that, that got, that's my most viewed video this year on YouTube. I should fold ace king more often. This is not a spot like that, though. This is not a spot like that, yo, yukura. Yukura? That's a yukura? Oh, 27% only. What is happening here? Oh, we should raise, okay. I, uh, I think he's isolating again. We have 10 big blinds. And it tells us to raise to 7? Uh, that's not, that's not something. Why, why is that? Why is that? This is just a little bit of. So, is it silver noise? Or is there actually something going on here? Why, why would we need to make it 7? So we can make a fold still? No, we never fold. We have 3 blinds left, so we never fold. I, I don't know about that. I understand the bluff in the previous hands. To make it 4 blinds with the, you know, weak parts, portion of your range and the strong, polarized range, I totally get that. Um, but here I don't understand. Here I don't understand why we make it 7 blinds with most of our range. I don't want to end on that hand, one more. For this hour. Yeah, king 7 off. Let's not, let's not insta-fold, let's think about, uh, what our weakest hand is, we open here. Or jam here, we don't have an open here. Uh, we are the shortest stack, well, we are. We are second, but. Second to last. Probably not that much of ICM pressure. Probably just a general range of like 5s plus. Suited nines. King 9 suited, jack 9 suited, queen 9 suited. Um. Ace 4 suited? Something like that, 6s plus ace 4 suited. Suited nines. Ace 10 offsuit? That's my guess. Guesstimate of that jamming range. What did I say? Uh, roughly. Did I say 5s plus? Ace 4 suited, I was a little too nitty, but it's, and did I say suited nines? I think I said suited nines. That's pretty close, I'm happy with that. But this is, this is not much different than, uh, chip EV. This is pretty much chip EV. Except we have some min raises more often, maybe? So we can get away a bit more often, yeah, I don't know, it's mostly chip EV. Our bubble factor is. What type spot? Lowjack? I'm always amazed that it's still pretty high. Still a pretty high bubble factor on risk premium here. 8%. So that means normally, we jam a bit wider than this. Chip EV is a little wider. Probably add 3s, king 8 suited. You know, king 10 offsuit, something like that. Alright. I'm enjoying this, chat, that was the first hour. Um. Quick break. And after the break, we'll, uh, well, let's end this, uh. Where is the button for that? There's a button for that somewhere. Here. We have, uh, 92% score, terrific! 15 best and 2 correct answers. Okay, I'll take that. Put some songs in the queue, everybody, I'll be back in a couple minutes. Then we'll do the other drill I prepared. The actual final table. Drill, see you soon. Hey, we're back. I'm, uh, I'm loading the marbles for next hour. You haven't missed a race. This is for next hour, but I have to load it up. Thanks for joining in everybody. We do another hour of GT. Hey, let's continue. We, uh, we had a first hour of, uh, final two tables. We did really well, and now we're gonna do some final table stuff. Hope everybody is, uh, gonna help me out a little bit. It was fun to do this together last hour. Let's do it again. Um, final four players chat. Ranges get wide. Ranges get interesting. I think we min raised this. Um, I think it's for sure good enough for min raise. Um, oh, why do we get always the question? Probably Queen five suited or something. ICM is not a real big deal here. Um. We can pressure the big blind who is not gonna defend as wide as the short stack. What is the final table? I'm not aware of those. Yeah, it's been a while for me as well. A solution could be play shorter fields, smaller fields. I, I'm also saying, I'm also telling this to myself. Smaller fields, you make more final tables. You get more experience with ICM. You get more experience with heads-up play, you know? Things like that. Uh, I think we min raise. Oh! It's not even a thing? We should limp? We should fold? What's hap- what's happening here? Uh, we get, we get three bet to five. Uh, I think I'd fold. Okay. Um. But let me check that. Let me check that. Min raise is wrong. Whoa, and I'm not even, I'm not even in the neighborhood. Oh no, sorry, this is, uh, no, 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 this is the range. This is the range. I was in the neighborhood. This is the actual range. I was off by one. And we don't have a limping range. I love that. And I hate limping. It's just suited eights here in the, in the cutoff. Um, to be fair, now looking at the spot again. We are under ICM pressure of these two players, right? I should have, I should have realized that quicker. That because they cover us, we are under a bit more pressure. We are even on the highest pressure, right? Yep. As the cutoff, we are under the highest ICM pressure of everybody on the table. Uh, and the small blind versus the button is also high, but, um. Which makes sense because the small blind is second in chips. Yeah, it makes a lot of sense. So we need 13% more equity in a lowland situation here. With a double factor of 1.7. So yeah, that's a huge ICM pressure. We still open pretty wide. I think it matters that the big blind is shortish. So we won't get, you know, maybe we won't get punished as hard by the big blinds. He will be a little bit more tight against us. But the button and the cut, uh, the button and the big, the small blind can, can torture us. Makes a lot of sense. I'm Team Puck. I'm Newcastle. Well, I'm more Team Puck than I'm Newcastle. I'm more Team Pocky than, uh, than that. Ooh, this is a final table with how many players? I've never seen so many players. This is nine? This is nine players. Holy shit. I don't think I've ever seen nine players in a, in a GTO wizard sim. I think it's almost always eight. Nine-handed final table. We have 44 big blinds. We are in a comfortable spot with a couple of shorties. Uh, very interesting to be sure still. Uh, against Under the Gun. I think, I think I call. Think I call against Under the Gun, nine-handed. Um. What do you guys think? Eight's in the small blind. I can see a three-bet, but it's, it's very annoying to have the three-bet fault. But it's a 30-blind jam. I don't think eight's is gonna be doing great as a three-bet call. Uh. Tens for sure. But, uh. Jam is out of the question. There's a 50-blind stack still. I, I think jamming is out of the question. Uh, we are, uh, we are for sure, uh, under, under much ICM pressure from the big blind here. I can see three-bet calling tens or something. But yeah, my first reaction was call here with eights. Henny agrees. Yo, Honing Emmer, how you doing? Welcome to the stream. Bit of GTO studying tonight. Yeah, I can see a small portion of three-bets, but I think we mostly want to play cautiously here. Especially because the big blind covers us. 100% call. Let's go. And then as always, we quickly check the ranges to see how, uh, it looks. Yeah, we start three-betting jacks. Even tens is just a flat. Yeah, that makes sense. And again, we see, we see this pattern a lot. We saw it also on the bubble, uh, last hour. These, these small bluffs with Ace-X offsuit and King-X offsuit. And still super wide flooding range, right? Whoa. This is against Under the Gun opening. Under the Gun min raising. We are in a small blind. But the thing is, uh, we are covering them, which I guess helps. Uh. Or did I look at the wrong spot? Is this the spot? Yes, this is the spot. Wow. Sorry for that. Sometimes this interface, especially zoomed in like this, it's a little confusing. Uh, this is our, uh, continuing range. So it's even tighter than what we just looked at. It's Queens plus as a three-bet. Not even jacks, a little bit though, a little bit though. Tens is a flat. Uh, eight is a clear flat, and we have all these min raises. Not on the oof, not on the offsuit side. In the big blind, it's on the offsuit side. And in the small blind, it's on the suited side, all these three bets. That's interesting. That's interesting, right? And I think that's a pattern you see more often because the big blind already calls with all those suited hands. Because you're in a such a good flop situation, you're like. Playability post-slop, get a good price, you call super wide. But we don't bluff as much with the suited hands in the big blind. We see that a lot. We have to use that, uh, those hands from here. Alright, turn up the volume for that song a little bit. Back to the trainer. Eight's is a flat. Let's move on. This is all final table spots, everybody. This is all final table spots, and please play along in the chat if you, uh, want to give your opinion. Uh, King-Queen offsuit in the small blind. We cover everybody that's left in the hands. Um, because the big stacks already folded. I kind of like a three-bet here. Maybe King-Queen suited likes to flat because it's so strong and we don't wanna, we don't want a three-bet fault, King-Queen suited. We often see that. King-Jack suited, King-Queen suited, Ace-X suited. Those are too strong to three-bet fault. But I think this one, I'd like a three-bet. We can pressure the button. Um, sometimes they call, we can pressure post-slop. Uh, I can see flat as well, but I think I like three-betting. And I think I'm flat with the better suited broadways. Three-bet fall seems pretty cool, says Henny. Hey, you're the nit in the chat. If you think it's cool. I think it's a bit too wide, uh, it's a bit too deep to jam. It's, it's so, it's such a disaster if he wakes up with it and we lose 34 blinds. We go back to 17, we'll be in la- in last place together with the high jack. Oh, you're the nit. Sorry, Mr. Carps. I didn't want, I didn't want to out you. I didn't want to out you, but you might, you might be the nit, the actual nit in the chat, yeah. Okay, I'm gonna go with my, uh, first instinct. It's the three-bet. 50% of the time. We go post-slop, but we don't go post-slop. This solution has no post-slop, uh, uh, activity, so. He has aces, by the way, in this scenario. So it's 50-50 calling and raising. Let's quickly look at the whole range. In the small blind against the button open. Interesting. So. King-Queen suited is indeed a call. And, but I'm not completely right about my, my statement there. Because we have some jams with these King-Jack and King-Ten suited. And all these other, yeah, yeah, I think I'm, I'm, I'm right, I mean, I'm on the right idea there. King-Queen is too strong to three-bet fault. Ace-X suited as well. Like if we three-bet. Let's check this chat. I'm wondering if we three-bet Ace-X suited, do we call the jam? Must be, right? Let's see. So if we three-bet. Big blind folds and the button goes all-in for 34. We probably fold now at liquid again. Oh yeah, we call, okay. Interesting. Oh, I'll tell you all the colors, Mr. Carps, um. Uh, where's our original plan? Here. The dark red, is that, is that burgundy? But I don't even know what burgundy is. The dark red is always all-in. The, the, the light red is always raising, so not all-in raises. Calling is always green and folding is always blue. So yeah, so the, the burgundy are all-ins. A very small percentage of the time, so it's not that important to do perfectly. Like 1% of the time you should jam, but it's interesting for sure. Um. Now we have some jams here. And Henny thought about jamming King-Queen off, but it's, uh, it's a little bit too wide, but we have some jams, so it's not out of the ordinary. It's not completely crazy. But, uh, the three-bet is indeed, uh, a good play here. Yeah, we see that, we see that a lot for 35, 30, uh, blinds in GTO. And I'm not saying it's that important to implement in your game, but that goes a lot of GTO stuff, but. Uh, yeah, well, 34, uh, 34 effective, Mr. Carps. Effective stack is the only thing that really matters. 34 effective. For 44 or more, it would not, probably not have been, uh, not have been the same, uh, situation. We probably don't have any jams then. Ooh, three-handed. I like that it's random, uh, amount of players. Okay, the hand is, is not that interesting though. Uh, we have a very wide jamming range here. We are definitely in last place. Uh, there's almost no ICM pressure here. We're just trying to double up and, uh, and get into contention for second place. I, I have not seen, uh, I have not seen that, Mr. Carps. Maybe somebody else in chat has seen it. I, I, I've seen like an hour of the whole ways Adobe has a pre-final table. And then, uh, Pokéko, uh, the YouTube, the Twitch stream ended and then I didn't, uh, see much else more. Uh, we go all-in here, um. But I, I'm wondering how wide we go all-in here for five blinds on the final table. It's probably still a little bit tighter than GPPV, but not that much. So we probably jam every king. Or at least most offsuit kings. And as suited queens, we all jam, I think. Obviously every pair, every ace, every Broadway. Uh, very wide range. Is my expectation. But it's three-handed, you know, you never know. Uh, small blind jamming range. Wow. It's even wider than I said. I said every king, it's even every jack deuce offsuit. This is wider than GPPV, I think. Isn't it? For five blinds? Well, maybe it is. It's definitely not tighter than GPPV. And it's because our bubble factor is super low, right? Because we are so short. Yeah. Our bubble factor, our ICM pressure is pretty low here. So we go wild. And we jam this range chat. This is a GTO jamming range in the small blind, three-handed. Suited fours even. Suited fours, offsuit sixes. That's always a way to remember a range. Like pairs are different and aces and kings are often different, but to get an idea to how to remember ranges. I'm trying to always look at suited fours, offsuit sixes horizontally. That's a very easy way to remember the range. Then it's always wider on, uh, on the aces side and stuff, but that's a good indication. And, uh, we don't get to double up. No, we do get to double up. We get called by Queen ten and we double up. Let's go. I'm happy I won a random hand in GTO wizard. Uh, completely different scenario. Nine-handed final table. Um, a pretty easy fold. But again, we should, uh, analyze what we play here, what range we play here. So we are gonna be very nitty here, right? The Under the Gun player opens at a nine-handed table. Um, I'd be unhappy with Ace-Jack offsuit here. I'd probably fold that. Um. Ace-Queen offsuit, we probably have to do something with, like three-betting or flattening or something. Uh, or cut sevens or eights, probably start doing something. This is not a, I'm not great in playing this scenario. I'm not great with this, this spot. I know we have to be very tight here. Uh, I know we have to have some three-bets and not that many flats probably. Do we ever flat like pocket fives here? We can't really set mine, right? Maybe we don't ever flat. Ace-Queen offsuit, King-Queen suited. Make sure. It makes sense, I mean. Mostly three-betting, right? We probably have some jams as well. With like. Ace-Queen offsuit prefers to jam probably. And our lowest pairs probably also want to jam. Does it just play so bad as a three-bet fault? Um. It's an interesting spot chat. It's more interesting than it looks. I'm thinking about the range, right? Not the specific hands, because Queen-Jack offsuit is an insta-fold. But do we have a flooding range here in the lowjack? Do you guys think? Or do we just three-bet only? I think so. I think ICM hates calling here. Maybe we have some traps though with aces. And then we should also, uh, trap it some weaker hands on the other side. Um, to balance. Yeah, like I'm saying, Honing, uh, Emmer, yeah. Aces might also, yeah, it's not really limping, of course. It's just calling, but I know what you mean. Yeah, you're talking to this hand as an insta-fold, but I'm trying to think out loud about the range. But we already did that enough now, I think. So, okay, this is, this is interesting. Uh, first is Under the Gun open on the final table. We fold nines. That's surprising to me. I mean, I said we have to be very tight, right? But it's even tighter than what I expected. We have more bluffs than I expected though. It's, it's surprising in two ways to me. We have more of these three-bet bluffs than I expected. With all kinds of suited crap. And we fold way more pairs than I expected. Even pocket tens doesn't like to do much in this spot. That is, that, that must be interesting to other people too. Um. Final table chats. Ooh, this is a very big bubble factor gra- graph. What's our, what's our position? We are lowjack. We are lowjack. Yeah, very high ICM pressure. Um, we can, also means we can pressure other people with those three-bet bluffs. And make their life miserable. Yeah, 1.5 double factor. That translates to 10% more equity needed. Um, I, I find this interesting. We have to fold most of our tens and nines. Uh, and we three-bet call with jacks plus, ace queen plus. King-Queen suited is probably a three-bet fault? Yeah, King-Queen suited probably three-bet faults. Right? So if we three-bet call, it's like jacks plus Ace-Queen, Ace-King. That's it. I'd, I'd suspect. Let's check this. So we do, we do raise, three-bet to 4.5. And then the Under the Gun, uh. Jams. Under the Gun jams, I'm sorry. Yeah. Ace-Queen is even a fault, yeah. So it's kind of surprising to me because we generally hate two-bet folding hands as strong as King-Queen suited and Ace-Queen offsuit. But because the, the whole range gets tighter in this spot, because of the bubble factors, these hands get to be three-bet faults in this spot. King-Queen suited and Ace-Queen offsuit are three-bet faults, and only jacks plus get it in and Ace-King. And back to the original spot. Uh. The lowjack. Here we go. Nice tune by Goldband. I've never heard this before. But I'm sure it's a nice tune. It's Goldband. So chat, would you fold tens here against Under the Gun on the final table? Hey, I guess we should. It doesn't surprise me too much, but I'm not sure I would have done that in this spot. This was the spot. We, we mostly fold pocket tens here. And we three-bet fold Ace-Queen offsuit and King-Queen suited. I think, uh, we might be able to learn something here today. And it makes a lot of sense. It's a final table. There's ICM pressure and Under the Gun opens on a nine-handed table. I mean. It totally makes sense. We have to be very nitty here, but. Let's move on. Five-handed table. Blind versus blind. And we are the shortest stack. I think a hand like this prefers jamming a lot. Um, it's not strong enough to like min raise call, I think. Or min raise, like we go to three blinds here, of course. Out of position, we go to three blinds, but, um. I think we want to induce with better aces, of course. Like I had like Ace-ten or Ace-Jack, I'd like raise call against the blinds. Um. I think I like a jam with the offsuit Ace-three. Any opinions in chat? Is that too wide for 20 blinds? Is it too risky? Are you calling a jams? Alright, we all think it's a jam so far. Let's hope we correct. Nope, not really. Not really. Let's learn. Uh, mostly call and raise. We do get some points though. It's, it's 4%. It's not completely wrong, but. Yeah, we're all bad here, you're Honing Emmer. Small blind is very complicated spot, right? And it, even in GPPV, playing the small blind perfectly is very tough. So I don't feel bad about doing it wrong, honestly. Um, and look at this. Look at how, look at how right we are with the general ID, like. We jam every Ace-offsuit except Ace-three. What the fuck? We, we, we would have been completely fine jamming Ace-deuce and Ace-four. But Ace-three offsuit, no, 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 no. But ace-3 offsuit, no, 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 no. You got a min raise or limp that one, my friends. That is funny. That is so funny. Alright. The general ID is fine, we can jam lots of offsuit aces there. It's all about general heuristics, right? Uh... It's all about general heuristics. I don't care about that ace-3 offsuit being off by 1 arrow there. Ace-king suited on the final table. I think this matters a lot, what happens after us. Well, nah, not really. We just go for this one. But I'm already trying and thinking of 2 ranges, right? What happens if we have ace-queen here or ace-jack? And we get 3-bet, you know? That gets interesting. This is not interesting. Um, but let's look at, uh, our overall plan here. Uh... Were we under the gun? Yeah. We were under the gun. Um, didn't really look at stack sizes too much because I had such a good hand anyway. But we were second in tips, so... We had some ICM pressure against the low jack, especially. Um, as you can see here as well. The red, uh, square indicates that we are under very high ICM pressure against the low jack, because he covers this by so much. Um... Bubble factor of more than 2. But only against the low jack, of course. Against everybody else, we cover. But it does impact our opening range, so we go a little tighter. We don't open the queen-9 suited, 10-9 suited. And to surprise me, we open as wide as ace-8 offsuit, to be honest. I would expect it to be like ace-10 or something? Here, on the final table? 7-handed with some ICM pressure? I'm surprised, it's ace-8 offsuit here. It might even be wider than, uh, than GPPV. Um, but that's because we pressure everybody else. Um, so once the low jack folds, we are in a happy place, right? So that's why, especially on this side of the offsuit hands, we open a bit wider than, uh, GPPV. I don't think I would have opened ace-8 offsuit here, but that's, you know... It's okay. It's okay. Yo Moose! Looking while studying! You can look while we are studying! What are you studying, then? Oh yeah, you talked about that, you talked about that. When is your, uh, when is your exam or your, uh... Your, uh, your test? While we continue with pocket eights here, the only question here is do we induce or jam? Right? Uh, everybody's so short, though, look at that, everybody's so short. Uh, we want a ladder here. Look at all these short stacks that already folded, 8, 11, 10 and 5. So... This is probably still an easy get-in, but we have to be a bit more careful than it looks like? Because if you are on the final table, you want a ladder, right? Um, and this is 9-handed still? And we are in like 4th place or something? Um... Yeah, we are in 4th place in chips right now. So we have to be kinda careful here. We probably min raise call against 1 jam? I don't think we jam this, I don't think we jam this, I think we min raise... Uh, min raise call against the big blind and the small blind? Hmm? Probably. 69% min raise? So it's also some jams? Yeah, and I think we are just... It's just too strong to fold, right, if they jam? It's just too strong, I think? Uh, I wouldn't call any pair, though, I'd probably fold fives, sixes? But eights just seems too strong, it's all... We have 2 blinds left if we are getting eliminated here. If we lose the hand, we have 2 blinds left, it matters a little bit. Um... Yeah, 40% equity needed, it goes a bit down with the risk premium? But eights must be good enough, we still have enough equity. Yeah. They had ace-queen, I win the flip, bastards! But let's look at that a little bit, um... Our plan from the cutoff here is we do jam some of these low pairs preferably? Between fives and nines? Just open jam? And then we jam a lot of suited aces? Um... And a bit of broadways as well, interesting? And we min raise fold all these offsuit aces? And min raise call, of course, with top of our range? Tens plus, min raise calls? So, we kinda did that okay there? We kinda did it okay? Little Bakiria, how you doing? Moose says, "I have a whole bay of theory testing on August 11, but a lot to learn." May as well live poker at the same time. You can try, you can try. We can do at least 30 more minutes of this. Yeah, this is an easy fold, but we always wanna think about it a bit. Um, final table in the low jack? What would be our plan here? We are way the short stack, so we have probably a quite normal jamming range here. Um... Probably something like, uh, suited eights? Ace-9 offsuit, suited eights? Every pair? Probably? Ace-9 offsuit, nice, I said the same. And maybe ace-4 suited or something? Um... But of course, this is a fold. Always wanna think about a little bit, but our overall plan is it is ace-9 offsuit. High five, Honing, Emmer. It is ace-9 offsuit. Fives plus, not every pair? And, uh... Ace-3 suited plus. I said ace-4 suited plus. And I said suited nines, it's a little bit too wide. Uh... It's a little bit too wide to jam every suited nines, suited tens? Uh, but that's okay, close enough? Yeah. And a little bit of king-jack and queen-jack offsuit, but I wouldn't fault myself for just folding those, uh... That is funny, honey. Very often ace-dues becomes a fold. You also see it in deep stack open ranges under the gun? Uh, under the gun often opens ace-3 suited plus? And it folds ace-dues? Uh, which surprises me as well, yeah. That is often a little bit, you know... Borderline, apparently. But the bot knows, you know? Yeah, another easy decision, but let's look at this. Oh, we all have 30 blinds! So we're all under the same ICM pressure? Uh, which is a pretty small one? But there is one ICM, there is ICM, of course? Um, yeah, so this is just a normal open range, basically. We just talked about the normal open range, so I think this will look like ace-3 suited plus? This will include the suited nines, I think? And this will include fours, fives plus? And ace-10 offsuit is probably also borderline, yeah? Ace-10 offsuit is probably also borderline. It's probably opening ace-10s. There you go. There you go. And now it includes ace-due suited? That is kinda surprising to me because deeper stack, it's a fold often? Without ICM? And all our ICM pressures are the same, of course, because we all have the same stack? But there is ICM pressure, so... This should be a tighter range than GPPV under the gun? Yeah, it still is, because we fold the suited nines again. So, uh, yeah, that's okay, that makes sense. We fold the suited nines? And sixes and fives are opened completely in GPPV, probably? Uh, same as ace-9 offsuit and queen-jack offsuit, I think? Ah, queen-jack offsuit doesn't, doesn't... Ah, we're just talking in the margins here, let's move on. We were close enough? Uh, we are the chip stack leader, we are the chip leader, we will open wide here? And king-ten suited definitely in our range? But let's try to make up this range, so we actually can see if we notice a little bit? So we are wider here, because we are the chip leader, but how wide, under the gun? Under gun plus 1, 7-handed? Um... Suited, suited, suited kings, suited eights probably, like jack-8 suited, jack-nice suited, all open here, I think, queen-8 suited? Um... Probably like, probably also lots of offsuit aces, because we block their jamming range? Like ace-8 offsuit probably also opens here? Every offsuit, every suited ace? Suited sevens maybe even, probably suited eights? Almost a jam, yeah, yeah, yeah. If, uh, if it's all sub-20, we can probably jam? Um... We might have some jams here, honestly? 24 effective? And... And they're under super high pressure? Um... I probably won't do it, but it wouldn't surprise me too much? What the fuck? What is happening? Why is this wrong? We're gonna look at why min raising here from 50 blinds is a mistake? That's an inaccuracy. We are all in, honey! Wow. That is, uh, that is cool. And it's especially... That surprises you too, I know. So let's think about what this jamming range looks like. It's probably king-10 suited, king-jack suited? Ace-5 suited like a couple hands, like... It will not be a wide range? Maybe a couple offsuit aces, ace-10 offsuit? It's probably one of those weird spots where we jam a couple hands? Uh, yeah, a couple? A couple, plus all suited aces? Very interesting range, chat. So we're on the right track with jamming there? But every suited ace up to ace-jack suited prefers that? And the offsuit aces min raise is fault? Yeah, and I also get the jams with the lower pairs? But this surprises me, this whole bunch of suited aces? Well, um, well... I can't put it into words directly, no? But we have a low bubble pressure and they have also a high, they have all a high, uh... Pressure here, of course? But that matters a lot in our opening range in general? Um, I know why we want to jam the pairs, because they they realize the equity better as jams? And we also see that with ace-x, uh... A lot? But often not as weird as this, right? No offsuit at all and only suited? Just an equity question? Because, uh, you know, we need that extra 3% equity when we get called, apparently, in this spot? Um... Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, we're effectively 23 blinds or something, 24? Um, you can see it here on the right? Uh, with 24 effective? Um... And we can play table captain, so we can play wide, apply pressure? Um... Oh! The big blinds, yeah, sorry, um... That happens, that matters a lot, too? Of course, there's no bounties here, right? Um... If there were bounties involved, we would jam much wider than this? Because of that? Uh, yeah, the big blinds, uh... Because of the big blinds, the mid-stacks are under high ICM pressure? That's the right analogy here that I should have said earlier? Because of the big blinds, the button and the small blind are under high ICM pressure? The button and the small blinds, see? Are under very high ICM pressure, deep red? Against us? They need 18% more equity to call an all-in? So if we jam ace-7 suited? Then they're not even supposed to call with like ace-10 suited, like... That's even a fault? Uh, let's look at that, then? I think the button has to fold ace-10 suited here? Even if they know we jam as wide as this? Uh, maybe even ace-jack suited is a fault? As the button, if we jam? So let's jam? Let's do the creative pressure jam? And let's look at, uh, which position, the button? Who? Let's look at the button's continuing range here? Haha, wow! Yeah. Oh, sorry, I clicked already, then I saw your... Wait. Um... I do, uh, let people guess a lot, uh, in spots, but I clicked already this time. Ace-king is a fault here? I should show people this chart, uh... As reply to that YouTube video I had a couple months ago where I folded ace-king on the final table? This is one of those situations where ace-king offsuit and ace-king suited are even a fault, yeah? And it makes a lot of sense? Because, uh, not even, it's not only the big blind, right? That's a big factor, that the big blind has to bust first? But we're also covering these 3 people? So... That also matters here? That's why our bubble factor is so high? That's why it's above 2, you don't see that a lot? So this is one of the most high-pressure ICM spots you can get, basically? Um... If the small blind also had 3 blinds, it would be even worse, right? We might even fold jacks, right? If the small blind also has 3 blinds here? But yeah, very interesting. We're learning ICM poker here, everybody! And step 1 is understanding? Step 2 is actually implementing it in your game, but the more often you look at it, the easier it will become, right? Yeah, you call, I'm obviously not playing, but maybe if somebody hears this, uh... If there's problems on GG, let us know? Haha! You have to first say, "Fuck you all, motherfuckers." Yeah, I agree. Alright, 4-handed here, same, still final table? Um, pretty easy fold, I guess? Hmm? Interesting. If we are a little deeper, we can defend a hand like this, of course? But I'm not sure this is the right hand to do it with, with 4 blinds behind? Uh... We do need to find an all-in quickly? But maybe? And you'll be getting a great prize, right, but... 80%? But... I'd probably fold, but I'd defend like jack-8 suited? And try to hit something? So... I'd defend like jack-7, jack-8 suited? Yeah, we are way short, there's no, there's no big ICM pressure? But how often do we flop something great with this, you know? But I can see, I can see... Uh, I can see this being a defense? I can see it? Any other opinions in chat? I think I fold this? But it's probably close-ish? I'm sure jack-8 suited is a defense? And we jam every pair, every ace, every Broadway, we just jam in here, right? Not sure why we're listening to this tune, by the way? "The Language of Love" by Elvis? Well, I know why, it's in my playlist? Oh! Okay, I have to like cut this out of my YouTube video now? We continue! So I think it's a fault? I'm wrong? It's a call? Let's see how close we are? Let's see how close it is? Okay, okay, every suited jack? Yeah, I'm okay with that, I'm okay with that. So yeah, we defend right, because we have no ICM pressure? Basically, no ICM pressure, see? Just above 1? So almost GPPV defense? Sorry for the cats? A little bit tighter than ICM of that GPPV? But this is also because we are so short that we have less... The suitedness plays less into consideration, because... You know? What are we gonna do? If we flop a draw, we're all in, if we flop a pair, we're all in, right? Flop play is pretty easy? But, uh... We call every suited jack? Alright? Ow! Queen-jack suited? Big stack versus big stack? We don't really wanna clash with them too much? But... I like a call or a raise here, uh, and I like both calling and raising here? I think it's both fine? I think we continue, I don't think we fold this? Um... We can 3-bet and still fold to jams? We do pick up the pot sometimes, we can play post-flop imposition as well? Uh, I think it's a mixed play, but probably by GTO? But I'd pick a raise here? I'd pick a raise? It's wrong! It's wrong! I said, we don't wanna tangle against the big stack. Yeah, if we get 4-bet, we have to fold. And that's the problem here, probably. Let's see, let's see. It's 100% flat, okay? It's 100% flat. So what do we 3-bet here, is the question? So we flat all the playable broadways. We never 3-bet the playable broadways. We always flat them, basically. We do have lots of these bluffs. These 3-bet bluffs with the ace 2 until ace 6, ace 7. And we flat all pairs. Like small 3-bats, jacks and 10s, even queens are flat. Um... And this is again a range where we can pressure the people behind us, but we are fucked by the, the big stack here, by the hijack. So our bubble pressure, our pressure is pretty high here. Right? We are the cutoff. Yeah, it's pretty high, uh, pretty high bubble factor here. Especially against the hijack who covers us. And I think that that's why we have such a polarized 3-betting range. Like it's basically just bluffs and a very strong hands. I think if the stacks were reversed, we'd probably 3-bet more with these playable hands, I don't know if this makes sense, but... Would be my guess. I don't 3-bet bluff enough, chat. This is some reminder to myself, if I'm watching this later, or if somebody watches this later. Tell me, if you're watching this, question, 3-bet bluff more? Because, uh, especially when there's ICM, you know? I don't do this shit. Uh, not that often, anyway. And apparently I do it with king queen, or king jack, or queen jack. But that's wrong, because then it's, we fucked up our equity if we have to fold. Yeah, 3-bet bluffing, I mean... It works against tight players, because they are too scared to play against us. Uh, it works against perfect players, like this is GTO. So we also should do it against good players. So, you know? It's not, it's never a bad thing to really try to 3-bet more in general, I think. Uh... No, not really, Honing Hammer. If I played 2NL cash, it's a whole different game, right? Uh, it's so much heavy to value betting. It's so heavy to value betting. Like I'd have some 3-bet faults, but that's just because I 3-bet a good hand and they 4-bet, and it's a super tight range if they 4-bet. So I 3-bet faults sometimes, of course. But, uh... No, I'm sure it's not that bad, I'm sure it's not that bad. Um... Because that hijack will not 4-bet bluff as often. So we don't have to throw away our equity as much as, uh... As much as in GTO land, right? Because say we do raise, say we do raise. And then that hijack bastard makes it 18 blinds, 4-bets to 18 blinds with this range. Very polarized, of course. Some ace x and some very strong hands. Um... I'd hate my life if I get 4-bet here with king queen suited or king, queen 10 suited. Uh, but population on your final tables they are not 4-betting with ace 2 to ace 7 suited. Apparently they should, but they are not. That makes a lot of sense, Honing. That makes a lot of sense. But yeah, I think this is, uh, interesting. In general, 3-betting more, man! But not the specific hand in GTO land, right? It's fine. Let's move on for a couple more. In the big blind with 44 blinds. We are in 3rd place in chips. Some confetti, uh, cannon bursted there in the clip. Yeah, this is, uh, annoying. But we have to defend this, right? Um... We have to defend this, there's even a bit more anti-C in the middle, because this is 9-handed? Oh no, it's 8-handed. We need 16% equity. We need to realize 16% of our equity postlop. That is such a low number, and that's why the big blind defends wide. Um, I'm not in love with it against under the gun here. Um, because that should be a pretty strong range, right? Well, he's short, so whatever. Um, we could just try to hit a pair. And even if he gets in trouble, we are still alive if we bust him, if you don't bust him, so... This must be a call, I'm not jamming here ever, right? Alright. Quickly look at that big blind defending range. It's still super wide, yeah. We're not that concerned about defending super, but we do fold some ace x. We do fold some ace 2, ace 6, ace 7. Yo Brazilian Dong, welcome to the stream, my friend. Vamos! Marble race in a bit, by the way. Get your marble in there for the first marble race of the stream. In the Rocky Fighting Steps. There's a couple more hands on the final table. Random final tables, this is all different stack sizes and stuff. Different number of players. Uh, queen 8 suited in the cutoff. Would normally be an open, but what is our ICM situation? We are the chip leader. And we cover everybody behind us, and they are under high ICM pressure, because there's 3 short stacks. This is similar to the spot earlier where we jammed that king jack suited. Uh... I think I can see some jams here again. But we are closer to the small blind than in the other situation. Jamming is a bit more dangerous here, because the small blind has 20 blinds. I certainly not fold this, Yitante. I certainly not fold this. But I'm thinking about, should we jam a hand like this here? Probably not, right? We need some ace x blocker or a low pocket pair. Or maybe those suited broadways sometimes. Um... So I'm just thinking about my whole range here, I think we have some jams here, for sure. As the big stack, covering for 20 blinds effective. We have some jams here, but I like a min raise with this one, yeah. I like it, but we can fold to a jam. But still, we pick up chips a lot. Alright, it's perfect. Perfect! Let's see the range for a quick moment. We don't jam that much. How do we jam queens? I would always min raise queens and hope they jam on me, right? I totally understand the ace x bluffs. Jams. Covering people, pressuring them. I don't really understand the queens. That seems too strong to me to just flick it in there. But I guess we needed to balance our bluffs, but... Oh yeah! Thanks, uh, Honing Hammer, that's why it doesn't make any sense! Thanks for pointing that out to me. So let's go back to the actual decision here. We are the cutoff. There you go! Forgot everything I just said! We do jam a lot here, we do jam a lot here. Uh, and indeed we min raise with the queens, like I expected, so that's all good. Uh, we jammed the pocket pairs. We jammed lots of ace x and we jammed a lot of suited broadways. Um... This is a spot where we are allowed to jam a lot, because we can pressure everybody. Bubble factors are low for us, high for the people behind me. If you're watching this on YouTube, you can pause this video here and look at it. Um, so yeah, it makes a lot of sense. Um... Awesome. Let's, uh, let's take a quick break. I can't speak anymore, I lost my voice, so let's take a big, big break. First end, uh, this madness. Let's see how we did. Where's the end button? I can never find these buttons. Here it is. Improvable! 69%! I mean... I can live with that score very much. Approvable, improvable, I mean, improvable! 69% GTO score, not too bad.